I will bring the Temecula Planning Commission Regular Meeting of September 4th to order. And we will begin with the Flag Salute by Commissioner Watts.
Please join me. Flag salute. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands. One mission, and a God, and a soul that they would be in justice.
Okay, thank you. We will have roll call now.
Chair Hagel.
Here.
Commissioner Ruiz.
Here.
Solis.
Here.
Charlie Trejo.
Here.
And Watts.
Here.
All are present.
Okay, do we have any public comments?
We have received no public comments.
Okay, then I'm gonna skip reading that. We'll go to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the commission request specific items to remove from the consent calendar for separate action. A total thirty minutes is provided for members of the public to address the commission on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary. Speaker cards will be called in the order received. Still images may be displayed on the projector. All other audio and visual use is prohibited. Public comments may also be submitted by email for inclusion into the record. Email comments must be received prior to 6:00 PM and submitted to planningcommission@temeculac.gov. All public participation is governed by council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021 dash fifty-four. The minutes is...
I move to approve.
Second.
We have a first and second. All in favor say aye.
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 It's five to zero. It passes.
And also, does that include the director's hearing summary report? Just to include that? Do we need to do that?
Oh yes, director's hearing report.
That was part of the consent calendar motion.
Yeah, but I just moved about the...
Yeah, I forgot to mention it.
Minutes. So both. Minutes and director's report.
Okay, thank you. Business? Do we have any public speakers?
There are no public speakers.
Okay. So what we have is item number three, receive and file presentation on community land trust, regional housing trust, and housing trust fund at the request of Planning Commissioner Bob Hagel. Heidi, are you ready?
I am ready.
Good, okay.
Awesome. Well, good evening, planning commissioners. Tonight I'll be presenting on community land trust and regional housing trust. And so, a little bit about myself, I was hired on board two years ago as the housing and real estate analyst here for the city. Previous to my position here, I worked on the other side of the jurisdiction, which is for affordable housing developer. So I oversaw a portfolio of affordable housing properties, and I ensured that my properties were in compliance with every local jurisdiction that they were located in. So now I'm on the other side of the spectrum. And so for my past, for the past two years, my focus has really been to structure and organize our affordable housing portfolio here in the city of Temecula to create a project database that would hold all of this information, streamline our annual inspection process, enforce regulatory agreements at the property level, and create an interactive dashboard, which you will see in this next slide. This is a recent project we've been working on to kind of show our, our, our public where our affordable housing projects are located within the city. That is an active QR code, and you can scan it. Quick disclaimer though, I'm working with our GIS team to work the phone interface. It works really well on iPad and computer. Still working out the, the technicalities on a cellphone. And so why are we here today? We're here at the request of Planning Commissioner Bob Hagel, but as well because housing is a priority to the city, and you know, we're always looking for ways to increase housing opportunities for the members of our community. So tonight we're gonna be discussing a couple items. We'll be going through some basic affordable housing education, affordable housing, the affordable housing production that has taken place in Temecula to date, an overview of what community land trust is, an overview of the regional housing trust, and then we'll have some time for question and discussions. So what is affordable housing? Affordable housing is government subsidized residential development that is rent or purchase price restricted, and the tenant is income-based. And so here are the affordable housing income levels. And what I went ahead and did in this chart here is to the right, you'll see the levels. There's four different levels. And then to the left, you'll see the sample workforce pay in, in these income categories. So for extremely low, we have a zero to thirty percent AMI, right, and this would be someone who's currently receiving disability or social security benefits, or someone who's temper, uh, working part-time. And then we have very low income, which is thirty-one, thirty-one percent to fifty percent AMI. And this is someone who makes between thirty-five thousand and fifty-five thousand a year. And so some examples of this are grocery clerk, warehouse worker, paralegal. And we have lower income, which is fifty-one percent to eighty percent AMI. And again, AMI stands for area median income. Just wanna make sure I clarify that. And so this is someone who would make between fifty-seven thousand and eighty-eight thousand dollars a year. And some examples of that are starting teacher salary, planning technician, EMT, Costco manager. And then we have the higher bracket, which is the moderate income, and that's eighty percent to hundred and ten percent AMI. Forgive me, I missed the one there. And so some examples of that are registered nurse, senior accountant. That's just to kind of give you an idea there of the income levels. And so these are the income levels for 2024. And I do wanna clarify, these are for the California redevelopment law. Okay, so I just wanna make that, that clarification, because there's different types of financing in affordable housing projects, but one of the main ones we use is California redevelopment law.
Is this new? Are the, is this a new redevelopment law? New numbers?
This is 2024's.
So they're new?
Yes.
They're different?
Yes. So then this is not, yeah. Okay? And so for a family, so the way that income restrictions work or income levels is by family size. So it breaks it down family size. So if a single person was extremely low, they would either be below or at twenty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. That's how this chart reads. And then a two-person family at thirty-one to fifty percent AMI or very low income would be, would be someone who makes forty-one thousand or less, right? They qualify for that category. You know, you can keep going. So a four-person family qualifying at lower income, which is fifty-one and eighty, then they'd have to make between eighty-two thousand dollars and lower a year, and so on and so forth. That's how that chart works. And then we have affordable housing rent, right? So one thing is an income level, another thing is a rent. And so rents are based off, or rents are calculated at thirty percent of area median income, because that is what the income allocation to housing has been set by HUD. So HUD is pretty much saying thirty percent of a household income should be what's allocated for housing, and that's how these rents are, are set. So that's why this reads extremely low is thirty percent of thirty percent AMI. Okay? And so for a studio you see there, it can go as low as five hundred and twelve or as high as seven hundred and ninety dollars per month for a studio to a four-bedroom. And you go down the chart as well for, you know, very low income, which is thirty percent of fifty percent AMI, right? Someone could pay eight, uh, between eight hundred and fifty to one thousand, three hundred and sixteen based on unit size.
Just a quick question while we're talking about these numbers. Is that okay?
Go ahead.
Um, so are these numbers what is subsidized, or what, or what the renter has to pay?
This is what the renter pays.
Okay.
But, there's a but. Yes.
Okay.
So this number does not calculate utility allowances. So every project has a rent number, and then there's a utility allowance that's set by Riverside County every year. And so that utility allowance is a credit to the tenant, usually. And then, so then, the utility allowance plus the rent amount cannot be more than this number. Yes. Yes. And again, this is just for...
Include the allowance, this number. Okay.
And again, I just wanna reiterate, this is California redevelopment law. Okay, these are just the numbers, because again, there's different branches of financing, but I'm only bringing forth the California redevelopment law. Okay? So that's that one. And then affordable housing production. So in nineteen ninety-one, City Council established the transfer of the redevelopment agency to the city of Temecula. And this is again why we speak a lot about redevelopment law and numbers and financing and rents and things like that. And so so far, affordable units developed and operating currently, on, as of today, are seven hundred and eighty-one units throughout the city of Temecula. Now, we have a hundred and twenty-one units in the pipeline, and I'm sure you've heard about them. We have Vine Creek, Habitat Way Two, and Rancho Las Bolsas. And Habitat Way Two is a, a single-family home, affordable housing, home ownership program. Okay, so these are not rental units. The rest of them are rental units. And so so far, a city's investment in affordable housing to date has been fifty-seven million dollars approximately, and the average cost per unit to date has been sixty-three thousand dollars, which I've read in many headlines recently of, uh, other jurisdictions being proud of spending a million dollars per unit. So I would say we...
So the seven hundred and eighty-one units are rent, rentals?
Uh, this, except for twenty-two of them. Twenty-two of them are currently single-family homes that were sold.
And then the one...
To low-income families.
One hundred and twenty-one are single-family.
Vine Creek is a multi-family. Habitat Way Two is...
But they're all ownership, not rental?
They're all rent. So two are rental, one is ownership.
Okay. So Rancho Las Bolsas is the ownership one?
No, Habitat Way Two, the one in the middle.
Oh yeah, Habitat, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
And so here's a video to show you an example of community land trust before I get into the details.
Community land trusts, or CLTs, are nonprofit organizations that acquire, own, and steward land permanently for the common good. The most common CLT land use is housing, but retail, office, and a variety of other uses are possible. CLTs give formal decision-making voice and power to local community residents in determining land uses. Here's how CLTs make home buying affordable for families in their communities. First, the CLT builds or buys homes using one-time public or private investment. Next, the CLT sells just the home to a low-income buyer who qualifies for a mortgage, and the CLT keeps the land, holding it in trust for future generations of home buyers. In return for being able to buy a home at a discounted price, the family agrees to pay it forward and sell to another low-income family at a price they can afford. The CLT manages the sales process, ensuring that each home-buying family builds some wealth from a predetermined, limited amount of the sales proceeds. In this way, the one-time public or private investment in CLT homes makes lasting affordability a reality and stabilizes communities. And CLTs benefit the larger community too, as they preserve and protect housing for long-term residents, helping to build stronger, safer, and higher-quality diverse neighborhoods, contributing to greater educational attainment, employment opportunities, and health outcomes. Visit groundsolutions.org to learn more about CLTs today.
So what is a community land trust? It's an independent nonprofit organization that acquires, owns, and stewards land permanently for affordable housing. So the primary mission of a CLT is to provide long-term affordable housing, right, and protect the community's interest by maintaining ownership of the land. So what is the ownership structure in a CLT? So the CLT owns the land, and the homeowner owns the structure that is built on the land. Okay? And so CLTs can also lease land to an affordable housing developer and restrict rents. So it can both be homeownership programs through a CLT and lease opportunities, right, like multifamily as well. How does the governments and funding work? So CLTs are governed by a board of directors, like any nonprofit, and so it's an equal-part seat, right? Lease holders, which is a residence or tenants living on the CLT-owned land, community members, and then experts and funders. Those are the three categories. But let's say each, you know, each section has three seats. It has to be equal across the board for the, for the board. Okay? So each area gets three seats to complete a board. Um, go ahead.
Is that required to have each of those three?
It is required to have each of those three.
Okay.
How many they choose, right? It could be one per each category, but at least, yeah, it has to be equal. Yeah. So again, two-thirds of the board is made up of community members and, which is why they're, you know, referred to as community-controlled organizations. And CLTs can access a variety of funding sources, just like any nonprofit would be able to, right? Grants, donations, low-interest loans, et cetera. And so I bring up this slide because we currently have the Habitat for Humanity structure, and some of you may be aware with that, aware of what that structure is like, and it is very similar to a CLT. And that's why I bring this up. There are some differences, but I wanna show you those two. So the CLT owns the land forever, while Habitat for Humanity has a forty-five-year deed restriction with the city. A CLT has a board, which is two-thirds community members. Habitat is its own nonprofit with their own governing board. CLT can operate primary within a specific geographic area, here in Temecula, while Habitat can operate anywhere, right, not just in one jurisdiction. The CLT will have to partner with nonprofits and hire a team to manage the assets and prepare future tenants for homeownership, while Habitat already does that, right? They've been doing that for years, since nineteen ninety-one. So both have the same goal, which is to create affordable housing for long-term. There's just specific differences there, right? We would have, or the CLT would have more control of just Temecula, while Habitat is a big nonprofit organization.
Do you have an example of that?
Of a CLT?
In our city?
In our city? Of, in a CLT? No.
No, okay. Yeah, 'cause I was thinking, I had that question. I was thinking Habitat was that.
It's similar, very similar, but yeah.
Okay.
The only examples we have are outside of Temecula, so like the Irvine Land Trust. I don't know if you've heard of them. They're a pretty big land trust, yeah. Okay, and so here's just an image of a map of where community land trusts and the shared equity homeownership program has been created within the US. So you, this is just to show you that the concept is getting out there, right? It's not a new concept, but it's still growing traction. Otherwise, it'd be all over the, right, the US. And so what would establish, what would establishing a CLT look like for the city or for our city? So first of all, City Council and City Attorneys would assist with the legal establishment of a nonprofit organization. And then we have, Council would have to select a board and determine the financing and the funding for a CLT. And then the CLT establishes a shared equity structure, right, or partners with lenders, developers, and housing educators. And then the CLT would look for and purchase either underdeveloped land or undeveloped land. And then that's just cyclical, right, number three, because they have to continue to do that to keep operating. Then CLT works with a developer to fund and construct the project, and then the CLT seeks funding for additional projects. Because it's, again, it's a one-time public donation of funds for each project. You have a question?
Question. Number two, Council selects a board and determines financing funding. Does that, um, what does the financing funding come from? Does it come from tax dollars or...?
So that's my next slide. Yes. Okay?
We're on the same, we're on the same page then?
Yes. So mechanics, the mechanics of funding a CLT, right? So this can come from general fund seed dollars. It's come from the housing trust fund, which has an asterisk. I'll touch on that later. Corporate donations, land grants, I mean, Irvine Housing Trust, right? They had the Irving, Irvine Companies donated portions of land and money to start their CLT. So it could be from a developer, you know. It's like any nonprofit organization.
I guess my question is on, not maybe just specifics, but general. Is there a demarcation between regular tax money that's used to operate the city versus money going to fund a program like this? I get it, it could have corporate donations and that type of thing. But is there like a direct link between what comes into the city in tax dollars and goes to this, to the creation of a trust?
So that would be a, something that City Council would have to vote on and approve, right? Like if general fund money is being associated or sent to the CLT, that, that's something that they would have to decide on.
So it would have to be basically a, um, public acknowledgement in the city's budget that they were gonna spend regular money on this type of a program.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, it would have to be very transparent.
Yes.
As to where the money's coming from.
Oh yeah.
Yes.
But the other thing too, could we, we could apply for a grant from the state or federal government and receive a grant that could go into, does that...
Which is where the housing trust fund asterix comes in, in a later slide. Yeah, I'll touch on that. Yes. Did that answer your question though? Yeah.
Yeah, I just would caution that grants aren't free. They always come with costs associated with them, as we discovered in the last time, but, um...
Okay. Yeah. And so here's another, a video, and the next slide is another video, just to kind of seal this. This is not like a local video, but it's just a really good video that lays all this out, what I've pretty much said.
In response to this, people everywhere are coming together to develop local solutions. They're setting up CLTs. Community land trusts are local organizations, set up and run by volunteers to develop and manage genuinely affordable homes, based on what people actually earn, as well as pubs, shops, gardens, or workspaces. And not just for now, but for every future occupier. This means that CLT residents will have enough money left to spend on living. And because the community is in the driving seat, they can build the housing they really want, including the design and allocations, and may even make use of the land before development. Here's how it works. First of all, the land is bought by or transferred to the CLT. They then build the homes or assets, either by commissioning builders, by working with a developer or housing association, or by doing it themselves. There are over one hundred and seventy-five community land trusts in England and Wales, half of which formed in the last two years, and there is huge potential for many more. The National Community Land Trust Network is the charity for CLTs in England and Wales. Our goal is to see a CLT in every community. So how can you be part of the movement too? Get in touch and get involved.
And so to seal up community land trust, again, the research that I've done and, and, you know, the knowledge that I've gained through this research is, CLTs are really being established to be set up as stepping stones, right? It's, it's a stepping stone to what's next for this family. So they're coming in, purchasing a, an affordable home in hopes that they have, exactly like the video shared, more financing to live, right, or more ability to budget their finances, and then move forward onto something bigger so that this home could be used again by the next family who's in need. I just wanna clarify that. And so on to what is a regional housing trust? And I would like to make mention that we're bringing up this concept of a regional housing trust because we are a part of WRCOG, which is the Western Riverside Council of Governments. And they're, uh, they've been doing some research on this, and I believe there's been a presentation at council given, and so that's why I wanted to bring a little bit about this up. So it's, what is a regional housing trust? It's a collaborative organization that pool resources and funds from multiple municipalities, jurisdictions, and stakeholders to address housing issue at a regional level. And so the goal is to create more comprehensive and coordinated approach to affordable housing. And again, we are members of WRCOG, and they have this regional housing trust initiative. And so the ownership and structure and governance of RHT. So again, our, um, regional housing trusts do not own land or housing units directly. Instead, they facilitate the funding, the policy advocacy, and they coordinate amongst member jurisdictions and organizations. So RHTs are governed by a board of representatives from member cities, counties, nonprofit organizations, stakeholders. The, you know, the decision-making involves multiple people, right? It's not just local. And WRCOG, in their research, does recommend that a nonprofit/joint powers agreement variation model be, take place for this to be successful. And so the RHT funding and focus, it really is contributions, right, from member jurisdictions, as well as grants and other partnerships. And again, the RHT addresses housing challenges across multiple jurisdictions, not just here in the city of Temecula.
So a regional housing trust with, the money that they would put into things would be community housing trusts, is that would be specific where their money would go?
So it would be regional, right? So if everyone puts money in, from, like, let's say, for example, it would be Temecula, Lake Elsinore, Hualdamar, come together and decide that we wanna do a regional housing trust for our region.
Right.
Money would go into one pot and be dispersed how the board sees fit of this regional housing trust.
So that, that money would be dispersed into, for instance, a city's community housing trust?
No, that money could be used however they best see fit. Is going to address the regional housing needs between these three jurisdictions.
Okay. But it would have to be used for low-income housing?
Yes.
The trust would invest in a specific project.
Okay. And that could be Habitat for Humanity project or any other...
Whatever the board sees fit.
Project, yeah.
Yeah. And so the differences between a CLT and a RHT, right? The CLT is a localized entity focused on land ownership and housing development within a specific community at what, versus an RHT, which takes the regional approach, does addressing housing challenges across multiple jurisdictions. The CLT owns and manages housing units directly, whereas the RHT facilitates the coordination and funding of affordable housing projects, but does not own the actual housing or land. Then the CLT emphasizes community engagement and control, as, whereas the RHT emphasizes on regional collaboration and more policy advocacy. And then, uh, the community pool of funds, oh, so, sorry. The CLT is a community pool of funds of which the city has influence over, and the regional pool of funds of which, of which are allocated and deemed necessary by the participating jurisdictions. So for example, if two million dollars was raised, right, for our CLT, it would directly go into our community and benefit our community here in the city of Temecula. Whereas in RHT, it could be split amongst other multiple jurisdictions, and the project could end up in another jurisdiction, not specifically here in Temecula. Okay? And so a housing trust fund. The National Housing Trust Fund, or HTF, is a new affordable housing production program that will complement existing federal, state, and local efforts. Their goal with this housing trust fund is to preserve the supply of decent, safe, sanitary, affordable housing for extremely low and very low-income households, including homeless. Right? I emphasize the extremely low and the very low. I know that it was one of the very first slides, but those were the lower-level AMIs, the thirty percent AMIs, and then the fifty percent AMIs. Okay? And so the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, which is HUD, allocates these housing trust funds, or HTF funds, by formula annually to each state. And our state agency, which is then HCD, or California Department of Housing and Community Development, takes these funds and then creates programs that can be applied to by the CLT. So that's why I had that little asterix. And I know, um, uh, Planning Commissioner Watts had mentioned, you know, there's these different grants. Well, HCD creates these grants that the CLT can then up... you know, there's these different grants. Well, HCD creates these grants that the CLT can then apply for and receive to fund projects within the CLT. And so that's how that works. And so in conclusion, both community land trusts and regional housing trusts are potential tools to address the city's affordable housing needs. You know, as a member of WRCOG, we will continue to monitor the regional housing trust initiative um, and kind of see where that goes. And then we will definitely need further exploration and engagement with our Supportive Housing Services ad hoc subcommittee, um, to determine viability and appropriateness of establishing a CLT or RHT within our city. And I will open it for discussion and questions.
Okay. Fernando?
Just, uh, thanks. A lot of great information. And one thing I really liked was the numbers that showed how many units the city has and how much money they actually invested. So there's a real number that says each unit approximately, I think it was about sixty-three thousand. That's one of the lowest numbers I've seen. I've seen the million, I've seen five hundred, I've seen six hundred. I've never seen sixty-three. So that, that's really good. I like, I like that number for affordable housing, right?
Right.
And, uh, no, it just sounds like a lot of good information. Thank you.
So on a regional housing trust, let's just say company X that does business, the corporation does business in Temecula, thinks this is a great idea, wants to donate, you know, X number of dollars to it, um, which they do. And then the regional board of directors, um, decide that Elsinore would be the perfect place for this. Under this scenario, that would be perfectly acceptable as long as they followed all the rules, correct?
That is correct. I don't know if Marisela has any input there, but.
Now, if a donor, and I'm, I know these are what ifs and everything else, but if a donor decided, hey, yeah, I want to give some money, but I want it spent in Temecula, in a regional thing, how would that work?
I will push that to Marisela.
I actually don't, I'm not sure how that would work. I don't know if, if there could be stipulations and then that would be considered by the board. I mean, ultimately, it's a board decision at the regional land trust level. The city would be out of that, you know, analysis. It's, it would really be a regional issue. So I do think, I mean, basically, I think what Heidi has set forth is that a community land trust provides, uh, greater control at the community level, you know, at the city level than a regional, um, land trust does.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and just to add to that, I think that's why it stalled out at WRCOG. It talked about, you know, the regional housing trust, and then you start getting into the mechanics of how does it work? What if each jurisdiction, you know, kicks in a million dollars, but then the first units are built in Riverside?
Right.
It's all about getting credit through the state and HCD, and RENA numbers are assigned by jurisdiction. If they were assigned by region, the communities might be more apt to work together and build them elsewhere or more where it makes sense next to transit. But when you have to perform as a city and meet your RENA numbers,
Yeah.
um, you know, cooperating at that regional level when you may not get to take credit for the units is where that kind of stalls out.
So it would be a program very similar to the county's TUMP pro- program, correct? Except that in, in TUMP, people that develop have to contribute to the transportation costs, and those get spread across the county. Depending on, doesn't matter where it was built, they all go into a pool and are addressed on regional needs, correct? Which makes a lot of people at the local level unhappy when they see the results of sometimes of their decisions.
Correct.
So I guess my point, and you've got it very clearly, was, um, it seems to me from a Temecula standpoint, it's a lot better to go with a CLT than it is a regional housing trust. Okay, thank you.
That's where we're leaning.
Go ahead.
Yep.
Okay, um, number one, I really like the slide with, um, the list of attainable housing projects that we have and that are coming, and I would like a copy of that if possible.
Yes, of course.
So that's one thing. Um, and then, because housing, it has been such a big topic, right?
Yes.
At every city council meeting. So the other question I have is, when you talked about the low income and very low income as fifty percent and thirty percent, does that mean that seventy percent is subsidized for the very low? Is that, am I looking at that wrong?
No, you're looking at, well, th- there's an equation, right, that goes into all of this. And the city of Temecula usually is not the only funder in these projects to make them pencil out or be able to build them out. So there's like a pool of funding that goes into these projects. That's why you hear a lot of tax credits.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, does a homeowner pay thirty percent? Or not homeowner, renter, pay thirty percent, basically? And then it subsidizes seventy percent, whether it's the city or whoever puts in for that, it's seventy percent?
Yes, yes.
And then the low income is fifty-fifty, correct? Is that how I'm understanding it?
Thirty percent of the fifty percent. So, so it's on, on, um, on household income.
Right.
Right? So thirty percent of their fifty percent household income is what goes as the rent.
Oh.
So it's, it's a thirty percent allocation to housing.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. All right, that makes sense.
Yes.
And then the last thing is, if you can just, if you feel comfortable giving me kind of the pros and cons of a CLT?
Well, um, I mean, the pros are, of course, that we would, it, like I showed here, it's a local concept, right? Uh, we could, um, have control of, well, not we, I'm speaking as if we're the city, but the CLT or the nonprofit organization that is formed, um, would keep ownership of the land for more than the fifty, the forty-five or the fifty-five-year deed restriction. So that's one of the positive, for sure, the pros that you, you see, it's, it's for the lifetime. And they say, you know, there's a ninety-nine-year lease on, with the CLT, there's a ninety-nine-year lease on the land, meaning this is gonna be affordable forever. Um, and so, um, the other side of that, the con, right, is right now we have regulatory agreements in place with all of affordable, all of our affordable housing projects. And HCD, or correct me, Marisela, if I state this wrong, but HCD pretty much says, once this building or this property meets that, um, forty-five-year deed restriction or that fifty-five-year deed restriction, they are good to do as they please with that project. Hmm. So although we can have a, you know, nine hundred and two units here in the city of Temecula that are affordable, one day we could have less after these deed restrictions come to an end. Um, of course, our goal will always be to try and get, um, you know, to keep these units affordable forever. That's where re-syndication comes and refinancing, and then negotiations with the city of extending the regulatory agreement, right? That's the ultimate goal, but that's subject to whatever the developer or the owner wants to do at the end of that restriction.
Okay.
So that's one of the amazing pros and cons I could say there.
Yeah, oh, that's clear. So looking at the US map, right, of the states, I mean, there's some states, their entire state is a CLT, right? Did I look at that correctly? If it's all blue?
So, yes.
Do you want to go back to that slide?
Yeah, I'm, um.
Are you there?
I'm here. I don't know if you guys can see.
We're not here. We're not there.
Yeah.
We're not here or there.
Yeah.
We're not anywhere.
Yes.
Dr. Seuss.
Jonathan, can you bring up my slide?
There we go.
Awesome. So the states that are in blue, they have CLTs?
Yes.
Okay.
And they have CLTs throughout the state. That's not necessarily saying the whole thing is operated by the CLT, yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, so then I guess my question is, um, and it looks like there are quite a few in Southern California, but just not in Temecula.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I just wondered why we're usually ahead of the game with a lot of things, right? So I'm just curious about that.
Think a big thing you should look at in those dots and those sections of Southern California is who has land. Remember, it's a community land trust. We want to own land, or the community land trust needs to own land to build on.
Right.
And so the question really is, how much land is the city of Temecula?
Because there's not a lot of land left.
Exactly.
All right.
Yeah.
I got it.
So the only, only one that we found so far in Southern California is Irvine?
Well, one that we've connected with and actually been able to speak to, like, met with and had like an hour of discussion.
Do we know of any other ones?
There are other ones in, like, the Northern California area that have been trying to reach out and connect with, just, you know, coordinating schedules and stuff.
But we have not found any others in Southern California, in the seven counties.
I've, I've found them, just that would want to meet with us and sit down and discuss with us, not yet. The closest has been Irvine. Yeah, and I think a lot of, uh, jurisdictions are still trying to figure it out, or a lot of community land trusts are. They've, a lot of community land trusts have started with one project. So the CLT was created, one project was built, and that's all they have, is that one project. So do we really want to get their knowledge on one project, right? Or do we go to someone at Irvine who's willing to speak to us about all of their projects they're working on? And so that's kind of the approach I took with my staff hours and, yeah.
And most of Irvine's, uh, funding came from the original Irvine Ranch development?
Yes.
So that's kind of unique everywhere, right?
Yes, that was a donation of land.
Piggy bank that, that existed, whereas everybody else has to fight for dollars that are very, very tough to come by.
Right.
Okay.
Right. Yeah.
So thanks. Good, good information. Um, I know a little bit about just some of the CLT stuff that I've seen before. So just want to clarify some of my knowledge and ask a question, but the CLT, the, the, the funding there is there basically to subsidize for the tenants that are gonna be there. The money's gotta be raised. I mean, it's still market rate development, it's still market rate construction and all of that, but the, the funding that they are looking for is what allows them to then subsidize for the tenant, correct?
That is correct.
So what happens in a CLT that has, um, you know, a project underway and has tenants in place, and they lose their funding? The CLT does. What happens if, you know, God forbid, something happened to the city's budget? Or a big investor that says, hey, we're not investing there anymore, and they lose that oper- that ability to subsidize? Then what happens to those tenants?
You're saying before they construct the project or after it's done constructed?
After.
That's a good question, because usually what happens is when the construction is done and built and tenants are moved in, you're closing financing, right? Like, you're securing that financing, so it's already been secured. That's how it works in affordable housing. It's like you get the construction loan, right? And then that gets covered, and then you move the tenants in, and then you, we're actually going through that right now at Los Angeles. We're closing the financing, meaning, meaning we're, we're secure, like, we're.
So where does the subsidy come from then, at that point? You've closed the construction. The rents are still being subsidized somewhere within that development or the cost difference, right?
You want to answer this, Marisela?
If I'm understanding correctly, I think the, and this will obviously depend on the project, but typically, um, they're getting the financing to be able to construct the project at a much reduced cost than they otherwise would. And that's what essentially allows for this subsidy where the, they don't need to charge as much rent as they otherwise would need to charge because their construction costs were significantly lower than they would have been without the subsidy, whether it's through, you know, city funds or through some tax credits or through, you know, land donations.
Right, or land, or whatever it is.
So I don't think it's necessarily like there's a separate fund where every, you know, every month they withdraw from that fund, but rather their project cost was already reduced by ten million or whatever that amount is, and therefore, on a going-forward basis, they are, the amount of income they charge is less.
Okay. I, I just want, my, my concern would be that, you know, we've developed something that would not be sustainable for whatever reason, if you're, because you're depending on donations. I mean, we, we've seen, I've seen with Habitat.
Right.
Every year, that's just constantly trying to fundraise, and if they don't fundraise, there's no project. So to me, that's, I, I think these are all great tools, and I think having a potential CLT for Temecula would be great. I think staying with the regional housing trust is great because there's resources that can still be offered out, however that might work. But just trying to have that understanding a little bit better to, that, you know, try to push forward on this, you end up with your foot in your mouth potentially somewhere that, that doesn't work out well. And that's a risk, I guess, that the city has to decide if they want to take.
Well, I mean, that's a prime example of one of the affordable housing projects we had here in the city of Temecula is Temecula Reflections. It's like eleven condos, was going to be about thirty-something condos. And then there, the, in two thousand and eight, we had the, you know.
Crash, yeah.
Yeah, housing crash. And so then, um, it was negotiated with the city and another developer to at least keep eleven affordable condos, right? Because the financing was no longer going to pencil out during construction. Uh, but again, that happens before construction, not after construction is done.
So then post-construction, it's, I, I think on one of the videos, there's equity that will grow by over, over time, the shared equity, that person is only eligible to a certain predetermined point of that.
Mm-hmm.
The rest of the money goes back to the developer?
No, the CLT.
Or the CLT?
Yes.
The CLT.
So that we can keep the house affordable.
So that's part of then their, their ongoing funding that would be the sale of, or someone moving out.
And a ground lease, right? The ground lease should be separate from that ex-shared equity. So there's the shared equity and the ground lease that's being paid into, constantly to the CLT.
Got it.
Yeah.
Cool, different tools, you know, I, I, and I think having, you know, this discussion, I think is important, number one, and, and, you know, like I said, I wouldn't necessarily pick one over the other if there's conjunction of ways for both. I like the control of the CLT better too.
Right.
So I think it's a good conversation.
So one of the benefits of a CLT is very local control. What requirements would a state or federal government have on things like determining income levels for various different, um, subsidies? Could, is that something we would have total control over? Or would we have to use something that is state, uh, a state number like the, uh, like a HUD number or, you know, federal number?
That is a great question. You want to touch base on this? Yeah?
I can try. So I think it would depend on the funding sources. So, um, if there's federal tax credits, that might be a different level. If it's, you know, some state grant, um, HCD has, you know, grant programs out there as well, that would be a different funding level. So it would really depend on sources of financing, and often, um, with projects, you'll see multiple sources of financing, and it's tip, it's the most restrictive one that controls.
Right.
Cause to me, it doesn't seem like the levels of the, the ranges for each of the housing, um, subsidies that it keeps up with housing costs, that it's, the increases from year to year are based upon a COLA number, which I think last year was three-point-two percent or whatever, where housing may have gone up eight percent or twelve percent or something like that. So for us to be able to control that, I think would be definitely, you know, our preference, um, which I guess could mean that we'd have to turn down grants or not apply for certain grants then. But, um.
Right.
Yeah, I, has those ranges really been looked at in the last five, six, seven years?
Yeah, every year, those ranges are looked at, and then they take the area median income for Riverside County and then give us specific range.
So when they're looked at, I mean, is it just like applying a COLA number and that's, you know, that's it? Or is it truly based upon the cost of housing in those areas?
The income numbers or the rent numbers?
The, uh, the income numbers.
Well, that's a great question. That would be an equation from, at the state level, I'm sure. It will probably go federal level, then state level, um, and then county level. Yeah, the, the, yes, the low, the thirty, fifty, eighty, one, one-twenty, those are standard.
Cause it seems like, you know, part of the, part of the problem that we're having with, you know, our residents that are having a hard time affording is, you know, their income may be growing, but it's not growing to the extent that rents are growing or housing costs, you know, whether it's purchasing a housing or whatever is growing. And that's something that really needs to be looked at, you know, at a state and federal level. But that's, you know, that's kind of the momentum that's causing this, this problem. Not to mention, well, the shortage of housing, but the shortage of housing is what's causing everything to go up so quickly, so.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I think that's all I have. Thank you very much, Heidi. That was very interesting and a little mind-boggling.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Little bit much to take in at once.
Yeah, yes.
I would like to remind my colleagues that, uh, it wasn't long ago when this board had the authority to approve certain things under, under California law, and the state, in their wisdom or stupidity, decided to take that away from, and they continue to take power away from the local areas. And I can just see them glomming on the CLTs as soon as they're formed, once they realize that it's a funding source. So I would just caution you, being the fiscal naysayer that I am, and, uh, and trying to watch out for, uh, for all of our tax dollars as they're spent, because the state doesn't seem to do a good job with it. And I do have some comments on what I think would be, uh, alternative directions that this city should. And I do have some comments on what I think would be alternative directions that the city should consider, but I'll make those later on in the presentation.
Okay, great.
Okay, anything else? You're good?
I think the presentation was done, so you mentioned you wanted to make further comments. I think this would be the appropriate time to do that.
Let me, let me have a few minutes to organize my thoughts.
Okay, thank you, Heidi. We will go on and then we can do that during.
I can.
Okay.
You know, looking at our responsibility in Temecula, there's really not much land left for housing development. And for, for a long time now, particularly since the late 2000s, when we had such an economic malaise across the country. But our brick and mortar sector has just almost collapsed in this town. We have retail centers that are half empty, if not more. And I have for a long time been interested in adaptive reutilization of properties. And to me, those are just marvelous opportunities for housing at some point. Now, I realize that that has to be driven by the market, by private development, but I just continue to see empty buildings. And I think it would behoove the city, and I've made this pitch privately to some employees, but I think it would behoove us to start looking at those facilities, those buildings, and start exploring the possibility of turning them into affordable housing or housing in general to meet the needs that are, that are out there. I think that there's, there's just a lot of opportunity. And, and I honestly think there's probably university programs out there right now that are dealing with projects. And it seems to me there might be someone interested in doing a project for the city as part of a student project or something of that nature, a professor trying to study affordable housing. After all, it is a pretty important topic these days. But it seems like it would behoove us to go out and see if we could find, take some sort of proactive act to start looking at the possibility of turning those, those buildings into, into housing. Because there just isn't a lot of ground left to put houses on. So I'm just saying that to my colleagues. I've had some private discussions with some of the professional staff in the planning department. And I would just encourage you to think along those lines at what the possibilities exist there, particularly in this area.
Target, the project that was going to happen in the Target Shopping Center, in the back area of it? That's probably a great example.
That's a great example. Part of our problem is we don't know about projects until they're almost ready to come to us, so. And that has to be that way, so. Matt, you look like you're dying to say something, so.
I was just going to say, we're on the same page.
Okay, good.
So we're working with KMA right now. They're looking at our vacant land, that's what's left in the city and existing zoning, and then forecasting the demand for retail, office, industrial, hotel, and residential. So that when we head into the general plan update, that's information we can feed to the general plan advisory committee. So when we look at underutilized shopping centers or residential areas that could possibly be rezoned to commercial, that we have that in our back pocket, and we can look at mixed use and introducing residential into our commercial areas, so. That will be a big part of the general.
That's music to my ears, thank you.
And I think Uptown is another area where we've attempted to do that type of thing.
Correct.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with that at all. The, the only thing that I would add, and I mean, you guys are having the conversations already, I think that's great. But I know other areas of the state that have just kind of dumped, for lack of a better term, some housing into an old industrial building or a warehouse building or something like that, and then deal with the infrastructure after. And one of the things I think that we've always done very well is consider that infrastructure first and then looking at that. So I, I would hope that that's part of that conversation, if it is being had already. But to keep that in mind as well, that just because there's an empty shopping center that could be housing, is it feasible for housing from an infrastructure standpoint? Is it, are, are there stores, are there parks, are there schools? You know, we don't have the mass transit like other, other ones do, what's the traffic impact? And I think if we do that, you know, we would say the Temecula way, so if we do it that way, there's a ton of opportunity. I, I would just caution against what I've seen other people experience is, hey, that's an empty building, we can put some units in there, call it a day, and then deal with it later. That's not, that's not how we want to do stuff.
And that's precisely why I argue for, let's get on it and, and start developing something. Because we've all seen what happens when there's a, when there's a void. The state jumps in there and tells you what to do. And I can see down the road where they're going to say, you're going to be required to do, you know, if you have so much empty commercial space, you need to turn it into affordable. I could see that, the way the state deals with locals. So I agree with you, Adam, on your points on that. But I, I'm always weary of, of, you know, beware, we're the state, we're here to help.
Yeah, no, I get that. And so, Matt, I mean, if you guys, if you haven't incorporated that for whatever reason, but if you are starting to look at some of these underutilized areas, if you could just keep that in mind of, not just underutilized, but how would the, how would everything flow and work together?
Appreciate it.
And Matt, I, I think the conference I went to, the most recent conference, there is a Senate bill that is creating law right now to convert commercial space into multifamily. That's doing it by right.
Yeah, there are, there is existing law that if you are within a commercial sector and you meet certain criteria, you can do, put in a residential use. But there's, you know, specific criteria that needs to be met, but there is already, kind of to your point.
Senate bills that are.
There's already exists, yeah.
So they're, they're already there.
But, but I think that's why, you know, what Matt said was so instructive is that, you know, the city, understanding that there are those bills out there, is still taking a proactive approach to see what can we actually do to rezone so that infrastructure and other things are taken into account in, in the general plan.
We're good? Thank you again, Heidi. Okay. Commissioners report, anything, anybody have to report?
Um, yeah, I just, this last weekend, we had some family in town, and we went to the opening night of Newsies. So, I mean, I think there's just a lot of opportunity in our city to, to take advantage of and enjoy. And I know I, I myself probably don't do enough of that. And I actually saw the mayor there. So he was telling me that he and his wife and family go to Old Town every weekend, and they eat somewhere different, and he cruises first, and then they eat somewhere. And they were doing opening night that night. But, yeah, so anyway, it was, it was a fun night for our family. It was, I've been to the shows there, the theater before, and they're excellent, top notch. So you, you don't even feel like you're at a community theater. It's pretty amazing, pretty professional. So just kind of putting a plug in there for the theater.
Anybody else? Any subcommittees? You have a subcommittee met? No? Not yet, okay. All right, we'll go to the Community Development Director's report.
Just wanted to let you know that tomorrow night, there's a joint ready and city council meeting in the conference center, and it's on housing. So if you want to continue the discussion or at least listen in, that'll be at 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock. Ron?
Yeah, so if you saw any of the work going on on Pachanga Parkway, that was the loops that are being put in. So the loop detectors are going in right now. And then a big project is the Rainbow Canyon Rehab Project that starts September 9th. They should be done with that in about two weeks after they start. So they're going to go fast on it. It'll be everything on Rainbow Canyon in our city limits. So that's a big project coming up.
Will it actually be closed then?
It's going to be flagged. It'll be, you know, you're going to have the flagging, you're going to have the one way, and they're going to turn around and come back.
So don't go that way for a couple of weeks.
And, no, I would avoid Rainbow Canyon. And it'll be day and night cruise, so you're not going to be able to avoid it. So that's why they're going to get it done pretty quick, because during the day, they'll work around the residences, and at night, they'll blow through the open areas.
I'm sure you've been.
There's no utility.
I'm, I'm sure you've been beat up on this too, but just kind of go on record and share. A lot of things I've heard about the Pachanga, Pachanga Parkway one is you had all summer to do whatever you wanted, and you wait till school starts and, and then go there. And I know there's, I know there's timing, but I promised a friend that I would at least throw that out there again because they were, it's a very common question that I've gotten over the last couple of weeks for people that, you know, that know that I'm on planning is, why don't you wait till school starts and then do it?
Absolutely. You know, what's really hurt that project is RCWD's project. Because RCWD is doing the reclaimed line for Pachanga. So all that traffic being backed up, it's easy to blame the city, and it's not us, it's Rancho Water. Our project went relatively smooth, and now the loop detectors are what's being put in. But it was backed up today, like, you couldn't believe, but it wasn't from us, it was from Rancho Water. We had a little part in it, but not to blame them, but I'm blaming them mostly, you know?
It's just timing. And, and I know we, we, I think it might have been the last meeting, we said there's never a perfect time to.
There's never a perfect time, but to be honest, the heat in this weather, that's when you want to lay asphalt. Because it needs to cook. And so by getting that binder really solid, it, it will make it last a lot longer. So I know people think, why till, wait till August? Well, that's the ideal time, you know, when it's hot.
I think it's less about August, it's more about when school's back in and everyone's got to.
I get it.
Funnel through the whole street over there.
Totally, totally understand, I'll take it, I'll take the heat.
They should plan school time around our, you know, our.
Yeah, the kids don't want to be back in school, they should wait.
So I gather Rainbow Canyon, there is no utility work that's, that's going to happen during that?
Uh, there is, well, yes and no. There's a gas line that needs, it's in the way. And it's, I shouldn't say it's in the way, it's shallow. And the gas company is very sensitive because it's a transmission line. So we'll have to use lightweight equipment. We won't be able to use the full heavy equipment, and we'll have to use lightweight materials over it. So we're having to accommodate that. So it's kind of utilities is being accommodated for, but in a different fashion.
Yeah, but it's not, not like it's going to stop.
We're not, no, we're not relocating, but we'll need to use other equipment.
Great, thank you, Ron.
You're welcome.
Okay, I think that's it. We will adjourn possibly to Sept-, well, probably October. Maybe, maybe later in September. Yeah, or there we go.